Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 24 Town Council Work Session. All members are here except for Mr. Serby, couldn't make it tonight. I mean, they're called to work. We'll have to ask the folks if you can just turn the electronic lights to vibrate or something. They don't make a lot of noise. It'd be great. Uh, so motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'm in.
Mr. Allen.
Oh, wait. Can I add, um, under new business, I'd like to amend the agenda to add a discussion point for signage requests on town property? And we'll just put it, what, at the bottom of new business? Is that okay?
Yep. Here's a motion to amend the, uh, the agenda. Is there a second?
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lynn.
Aye.
Ms. Rivers.
Aye.
Ms. Shale.
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Now, is the motion approved again as amended? Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lynn.
Aye.
Ms. Rivers.
Aye.
Ms. Shale.
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Off and running. Here we go. Uh, there are new presentations this time. New business. New business. Resolution number thirty-nine dash nineteen amends the no later than closing date set for resolution twenty-eight dash nineteen sale portion right away on River View Circle. I'll give a brief, jot a management brief for it. This was the property up on River View Circle that Mr. Rollins, Ron Rollins, was purchasing, um, uh, neighbor there and incorporated part of an alleyway and such. And there was supposed to close, the closing date on that close was originally July the And, uh, that did not occur. That didn't occur because of our change in staff and the thing is only on this at the time. It fell through the cracks, so I don't know if there's any other way to explain it. Um, so, what this would do is ensure that the closing occurs no later than October first. And what I can tell you is our town clerk has now taken that role by the horns to make sure that the closing does occur. And she has all the proper paperwork to walk that through. So, what, what I'd like to, what we'd like to do is approve once, I'd good any of this approved tonight, so they can report that if they're closed. Um, so is there a motion to approve resolution thirty-nine dash nineteen amends the no later than closing date set for, um, from resolution twenty-eight dash nineteen, the sale of the portion right away with the circle? So members, may I, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lynn.
Aye.
Ms. Rivers.
Aye.
Ms. Shale.
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Ask your manager. Awesome.
The mayor, that has been the board's first call of the year.
Very good. Thank you. Um, so we probably wouldn't even know, since we've had some turnover in these offices moving forward, if there's turnover, this manager comes along and near future that night, shows us all those things that are, that are, need to be done within that month for those companies, especially the property, property sales and things like that. Much bigger than that, so I catch up. Okay. Um, okay, discussion, uh, school board request for surplus funds this year seventeen eighteen tab fee. We've discussed this before. I know at one time this was hot and heavy and we just received something from this turn, if the turn one come up, or you've raised a discussion on this as well. I think followed by the manager. Okay.
Well, for allowing this discussion, um, so back in two thousand seventeen eighteen, and I'll try to keep this as succinct as I possibly can, um, back in two thousand seventeen eighteen, um, the school division returned to the town with a sum of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of their, um, school year, fiscal year. And that was confirmed through an audit. During that particular time, this, the, um, the governor and the state superintendent provided each school division with a memo, um, that they could use to have conversations with their locality about accessing those funds, um, the, during that next particular school year. In that attempt, I used that memo, provided it to all with that, um, documentation, and then we began the conversation. And that's kind of where it stopped. I know that there were, um, conversations with regards to how much money or what was the makeup of those dollars, uh, whether it be ADM money or unused, um, local funds, which at the time I believe now that to be a mixture of unused, um, local dollar and some increased ADM money from having a larger, um, ADM number than what was budgeted for. So with that being said, uh, we just wanted to come before you to have a conversation about that, to see what could we, in conversation with the town manager, which I've had an opportunity to talk to on several occasions about this topic, what could we, uh, begin to discuss? Because we do have, uh, some capital needs that are still out there and that those funds will allow us to do so. The particular resolution that I have before you, if this is an appropriate time, um, provides an opportunity to address how the town, um, and the school board could, could use those funds to support a school fund, a school fund capital projects line, uh, which could be extremely beneficial, uh, for the school division by encouraging us to be extremely conservative in our use of local dollars, knowing that on the back end, those funds can be appropriated with the approval of the town council towards some capital needs. So with that, and that's where the conversation has been.
So since the savings account for future needs, uh, the, 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 the localized money that aren't, you know, so are there enough to, to stand?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the goal. Um, we know that dollars here, uh, are very hard to come by, and what we want to be able to do is try to do our due diligence by being fiscally prudent to minimize as much spending as we possibly can, maximizing the dollar and applying those dollars that were originally intended for students is the way I like to look at it, using that dollar to attack other, um, school division needs, um, which would prevent us from having to come back to the town and have done correctly in most cases for, um, some additional funding, um, taking from other capital projects, things of that nature. So we would like to explore that with support of the town council. I anticipate on next week at my September school board meeting, having the school board approve a resolution to come to the town council to approve this particular resolution. So that's the, that's the goal. I think it's, uh, being fiscally responsible. We've spoke with, spoken with several other school divisions, Allison County and some, I believe in the asset city, um, both use a practice similar to this, um, and with their school fund balance. And I just think it's being fiscally prudent.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Turner, do you have that list that, 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 that one, maybe that's before?
Mm-hmm. I did, um, I think I presented back in...
Seven months ago?
Mm, this shit kept me on. I believe it was February, March-ish timeframe, but I can, I can reproduce that.
And are there any needs that might pop up since then, or?
The one that's, that's still hanging out there is the, um, is the HVAC system over the gymnasium. We've, um, experienced some, some, some faulty system, um, over the summer, and, uh, we're anticipating trying to, that being truly one of our first projects, if we were able to get something off the ground with, with this, the, the dollars here, uh, that would help us out tremendously. Um, it is a great need.
The evidence was already funded, so it's been out all of a sudden.
The evidence is taken care of. Yes, yes.
Those are some added.
Yeah, there are some additions. And I can, I can make those, I can make that, recreate that document, and I'd be more than happy to meet with you as an individual, or bring it back to the town council just to give you an update on what we feel as a school division we need, because that's one of the, one of the expectations in this, uh, resolution, is that we have a strategic plan and that those funds will be used to attack, I say attack, to address the, to address, um, those, uh, those needs. I say attack, I'm sorry. Blowing on the ball, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't know that it had been a lot since.
Yeah, it has. Yes, sir.
I figured it's happened some changes to it.
Yeah, there are. There are some changes, and I can bring that back to you all.
First of all, I actually have a couple of questions. I'm unsure of what we're discussing here. Are we discussing the, 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 but to me, there's two different questions here. Are we talking about the three hundred and fifty, the, 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 or are we talking about this? Or are we talking about the, and then I do have one other question, uh, for the school superintendent, and that is, uh, I've seen it on the news and I also somehow or another got on some email list from Dominion Power.
Uh-huh. I know what you're talking about.
And I understand they're, they're trying to put these electric buses out.
Yes, sir.
And I just wonder if you guys have any queries into, into what that process is? And, and I know a bus was your, a bus or buses was your need. Uh, and from what I got on the news, which is not, is usually not correct, um, it, it seemed to me that we would put up, or the school division would put up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is kind of what a bus would cost, and then maybe pay the extra to put these electric buses, bus or buses, in use in a locality, and then, uh, they would provide the electricity to charge them, and it seemed a little complicated, but I just wanted to know if we had, if we had reached out to Dominion Power to see if we were able to maybe, uh, maybe manage of that, meaning?
Oh, um, so the first question, um, I am bringing up two, two different things. You're right, three hundred and fifty, um, and the resolution moving forward. Um, I have, um, I received an email last Thursday and immediately responded to the emails, uh, wanting to know more about the process because that is a need, and I, you know, I would hope that being a smaller school division, we could get, you know, kind of bumped up the list, if you will, but then also to the town manager on Monday, I believe it was, sent me the same email, and I happily responded to him and told him, I've already jumped on that, and, um, we want to make sure that we're looking for any way possible to save funds, and I think that would be a, once again, a prudent next step for us if we're talking about saving school division dollars. But I have reached out, um, they gave me a contact person, and, um, I should be able to contact that individual within the next forty-eight hours, uh, but I, I jumped on it, so that's all the email. But thank you, thank you.
I have a couple of things. Do you have anything to comment? Um, I think they go hand in hand, the, uh, discussion of the amount and what's to do with it, and then the solution, which is, um, to establish this capital reserve fund. I have a couple of questions about the draft document that, um, you gave us tonight, and I know it's just a draft, but I want to go ahead and just bring them up so that when we go from here, you can decide whether these things are suitable to continue or not. Um, the beginning of the document says at the end of each fiscal year, any unspent budget in the school operating fund, which was funded by the town's general fund, will lapse into the county general fund. So there's some verbiage there that needs to be corrected.
That's my fault. That's my error.
Um, I would also probably recommend to strike the portion that says which was funded by the town's general fund, because there are many funds, but the ones that aren't spent in the end are always general funds, and so I don't want to get down and leave on where funds, as we found out.
Yeah.
Come from many places, and then they're all in a mixing bowl, and who requires what? And obviously, the word county needs to be the word town. Um, at the end of that paragraph, it reads as the school board capital reserve fund is a part of the town's general fund balance, only the town council may authorize the use of its funds. I just want to make sure that it's indeed your intent that this reserve fund would then be authorized or used by us?
So, in the, we've seen it done in several different ways, um, I didn't want to take that out.
Okay.
Um, it would be my anticipation that we would bring the needs to the town council for approval, um, but knowing that we would only come to you to address those things in an emergency, or that it was on our, our strategic plan, or it wasn't, I already said it's an emergency, so, um, I would think that you all would approve the request, but it does provide what I think is important, is a level of transparency, um, so that you all know, you know, what's truly going on with the use of those funds and understand that no one is trying to hide or use funds in a way in which it's not beneficial for all parties, so.
I like everything you just said.
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't it have to be approved by the town council when we discussed it before? Because of the way the budget was set up, technically it's an amendment to, to.
Well, we're establishing a new, if, I mean, this isn't established yet, so we're just in the session of establishing a new procedure and a new fund. And so, how that gets set up, what kind of accounting gets set up in, and who's authorized for it?
I remember though that we discussed it because since the funds technically come back to town, you can't, they don't sit in a school budget, so that's why it has to be in there correctly.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure everybody was understood that.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, and that the CIP would be provided annually to us?
Yes, that's, that's not a problem. I mean, I only anticipate once we establish, I mean, I, I, I presented, uh, a draft of a CIP to you all, and I would anticipate operating from that draft and only making minor changes once it's established. I don't believe it's going to be something that's totally recreated every year, but I do believe that each, each year there may be something added to the list of a strategic need for the school division.
I hope so.
Yes, correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I would hope that that cabinet plan is presented or is, is updated in the January, December, January timeframe, because that's when we get the audit back, so that's when you know that.
Yes, ma'am.
New funds may be coming back into the capital improvement. Also, that's when the planning commission gives us, well, it's supposed to, and they have, they've done for this one, but, um, get us the CIP for the other department needs. And, um, I just think it's a good time before our budget process starts to act.
I would agree.
After the audit, before the budget.
I would agree.
And my only other thing is that, other than revising this, like, just this minor point that I just said.
Yes, ma'am.
After that would then be a resolution to appropriate the, a portion, or what we're going to do with the amount of money. So we establish this first, then do an appropriation of money, and then that, you know, to be established.
And I think, I think that would occur at the end of the, at the conclusion of the audit, because then you would have a firm number?
This number's already firm.
Oh, well, this, this, yes, but.
So any additional money.
Every year.
Within, this would be the process, but this first number.
Right.
I think that there's been a discussion that it will be a portion of it will be used to establish this fund, and another portion of it will stay back to the town.
That's correct.
And so I don't know when, if you can draft up both those resolutions, Captain Hall. But go ahead. I'm good.
Um, so real printer, I just want to say a couple of, uh, little positive things as well. One is, uh, you know, we've been through this together.
Are you a fan?
We really do appreciate the, the synergy now with the, the school and the town and the budget process and the transparency, and it makes a huge difference, because just, what this has done out again today is just, um, when we identified the three fifty, and little notice we've been passed around, you owe us this, and you're going to do this with it. This is so much more of a professional, it's no fall out, um, legal way to do it and to sustain it.
Yes, sir.
From now on, and, uh, you know, again, you give us a list of critical needs, and, uh, we take them at our own, one at a time, look, we get rid of as many of the birds as we can, you know, but doesn't crush the town soul in one way, and everybody wants. But just the fact that being able to sit at the table and talk and have this level of professionalism, and grown council for five years, this is refreshing, to say this. I appreciate your efforts in this.
Thank you. Appreciate, I mean, the last. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Uh, the next, first man, did you do anything you want to say about that?
Uh, no, um, just, uh, second everything that Mr. Turner said, I think it's a great way to show that financial conservative approach, uh, also cautious use of the word "pack." Um, and I think it also is going to give me a chance to formulate, the mechanics of setting up the fund is too easy, it's, it's a very simple task to do. Audit season is right on the corner, so we should have the next generation of numbers of savings that the school did, uh, late October, maybe November. So I think we're positioned well to see some, one true, five dozen effects, like what I'm reporting.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is the disposition of the I-Club months. I'll let, uh, staff discuss this first.
So the C, the CD that the, uh, I-Club may have been matured, and the return on the CD was not significant. If it had gone into an automatic renewal, it would have been for a two-year term, and twenty-seven five percent for time, so half what we had was, which already wasn't. So at this point, we've just shifted it to a savings, we've done, I'm looking at evaluating different options, and we can bring that back to you, but additionally, I'm looking at all of the financial institutions in town, I think, one today, one tomorrow, and one next week. Um, I think that we can do a lot better with all of our funds, and we can, what relationships are available to assess out there, um, and kind of, so, I don't know, we're considering that. So I think that easily, first first, I'd like to make a much better return for us, even just the I-Club. So again, this was just to let me know what's transpired to date, some of what I'm working on, and then I'll be back before you begin my relationship. That is my, what I was asking, so if people question or, um, just, we, yeah.
I, I just wondered if you know what a realistic timeline would be to, um, get options, and, you know, I don't, it doesn't need to be in two weeks, but in a month, I'm already looking at discussing what the options would be. Okay.
And probably before that, I would hope to have another information from, from financial institutions and some other alternatives. We're going to move to that.
I'd say by the next work session, then, is it good?
On idea action.
Okay.
Other questions I have?
Not really a question, but I just wanted to know, I know this is just another, but it looks like it's on, um, January sixteenth to the nineteenth. It was a problem, just for a reference, it's probably just eighteen, that it says a nineteen month.
Oh, nineteen month, yeah.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the math was correct and all of that, of the nineteen month, and then that's sixteen month.
No, it was in the nineteen month.
So, I, I know you're looking at local institutions, your banking institutions, and I just wonder if it wouldn't give us to reach out to all of your, as well?
Part of that is actually part of the relationships that are being discussed from the, um, and some of the, um, Virginia municipal, um, police.
Sounds to me incredibly disheartening.
Yes, but actually, by finding that the rates that I initially talked to them about, there are some, um, interesting alternatives to some of our local financial institutions, so that we may have even bigger choice.
Thank you. So, um, okay, so it's nice. Uh, have these, uh, tree replacement requirements. We've had some discussion in house, in house, with angry citizens, builders, prospecting pretty much every, covered all the bases, a few before, a few against, and, uh, went through at the time, or, um, thank you. This is a very long section, I just pleased through earlier today, I have it a couple times, and also was part of this having taken down two trees and putting six back up in their place at one time. Um, tremendous calls, tremendous physical requirements to do it, and, but frankly, wasn't unhappy about taking down two most of their trees that were danger to the customers, and replacing them with three trees, or six trees, and now out of the six, only four alive. Yeah, you know, um, I get that, so.
Right. Really don't want to, but.
I would prefer to done crape myrtles than, uh, maple's or those, but, um, they tend to look better, they look better, um, from, from the stuff, but just thinking about.
Just speak up, we can't hear about you.
Sorry.
Can I speak up?
Use them, use them, two out. Sorry about that. Um, I just said that I had been through the process of having to replace trees myself. I've cut two down, had to put six back. This was years ago at Marina, uh, we had an ancient boat show there, and a couple of people were worried about treelands falling boats, we had a couple of those dead gum trees, and, uh, we had one with the berries, and, uh, and, uh, I had a tree actually come by, he said, boat trees are dead, and, uh, we put the table, and, uh, we cut them down before the planning office could come out and do their thing, and so I was, um, had to put six up, but the six we had to put up, well, it had to be two and a half, three inches round. I don't know if there were done a tree that big around, but that tree is about fifteen foot tall, and has a root hole that is big, and weighs a lot, and my wife and I do it ourselves, with, with a trailer, and so it was a lot of work, and again, we lined them up nicely, they were the thing we're supposed to, mostly four are still alive, they may be three by, by years in, uh, but, you know, just food thought. And I thought about that, I really didn't want those kind of trees on property, I would prefer crape myrtles, they're more in line with marinas, I think they offer nicer looking foliage, um, but, you know, it has to be a tree, right? Some sort of trees that, you know, where.
I have a couple of things to address a couple of.
Anyway, that's my two cents about that. I know you're not, though, you understand everything, but just discussing, so, yeah.
Yeah, just, um, there's two, there's two different articles that are in your book list. Article twenty-two, which is a Chesapeake Pay and Preservation Area of Lay District, which is regulated by, uh, rules from, and enforced by DQ sometimes and by the Chesapeake Pay Act. And those regulations, um, really come from those bigger entities and are, and you can't just mix and completely eliminate sections of that. Um, so any changes in that, and that's where the tree section is that says that you have to replace a two to one, and if it's in the RPA buffer, you have to replace it three to one, which is why at a marina it would be three to one, but not safe in RPA. Um, so there is one section there about that, and I've heard some, a couple of different suggestions on alternatives, and I, our planning department have to look into it. Revising these sections requires the planning commission to do that, just go to the planning commission, and they have to have a negative thought, but then we approve it. Um, article twenty-four, which is a different section, is much smaller, is a landscaping provision, and talks mostly about new construction and what new construction has to do to landscape, but in the back of it has the native species list, um, table twenty-four point nine. And so when you have to replant from article twenty-two, you go to article twenty-four and look at that list. Uh, that list is outdated, uh, the planning commission updated this particular chapter in two one fifteen, twenty fourteen, it was never adopted by town council. I would love to see that document resurrected because it is more in line with the actual native plant species that exists now, um, it's part of the regional, I ran for town council. So, I would love to see that document resurrected, I have a copy of it, the planning commission has a copy of it, and I'm sure we'll just find one in the office, because we had two landscape architects on the planning commission when the chapter was rewritten, and so it would, would be great to have their input, it was so outstanding in it. Now, specifically to the crape myrtle, my grandmother was going to shoot me over this particular plant, because, um, not only does my mother have thirty of them in her yard, my house also has them, um, and it was discussed at planning commission level at that point in time, but the crape myrtle is not an indigenous species, and so it is indeed not. in time, that the crape myrtle is not an invasive species, and so it is indeed not on the native plant list. However, it could be the, um, an amendment of this town council to approve the previously revised planning commission version, and add the crape myrtle to this species list. It is not an invasive plant, it is what we call environmentally neutral, it doesn't add anything, but it doesn't weigh anything, and that's why when we had our landscape architects on here, they were like, but it's not improving anything, and that's why, and we don't want it on the list, but there's a local heritage to it, and, anyway, so there's a way to add the crape myrtle to the list, and maybe not have to go through the whole process all over again, it's already been approved by the planning commission, it just has to come to us, if we can make that revision here at this level. So I would recommend doing that as a quicker way to handle some of those issues. Uh, not to say you can't refer Article twenty-two and Article twenty-four to the planning commission to get those through and help revision, it takes a long time, so it does.
So do we just have, have we draft the...
Bring it back up to it? You have it? Great.
Could I come on? I'd say I'd be corrected, but I believe that there are jurisdictions that have these ordinances, and I suggest to you, Richard, that you take a look at adjacent jurisdictions, because if I'm not wrong, I think they may allow the planning of trouble to...
I think in our revised version, we did do some of that.
We called a force vacuum, a real estate, a county approved video, plan to buy the property with natural re, like some of the rest of the...
So back to the crape myrtles. So, seriously, realistically, what they could do about this myrtle is that you can keep cutting it, it gets wider, it doesn't get taller, so like, you know, in Marina, when you have boats, you work on land during spring and fall, you don't have can't be leaves falling through the boats, so you still have the nice tree line or fish line or...
I will not fight the crape myrtle, I won't fight it.
I appreciate that.
I will not do it.
Thank you.
I have to go to Christmas with that lady, so.
Very good. Next on the name we're starting on, crape myrtles.
If I may add one comment?
Sure.
It's also in this, in this section of the ordinance about preserving existing trees, and this is a bit commentary, I think we need to do a better job preserving existing trees, I think we've allowed aggressive sort of cutting and lots, if you will, and the ordinance speaks of preserving area, and preserving, preserving more of the trees, and certainly only clearing what we need for the construction of wood grain. And I've noticed we've had several lots that, the entire lot's been cleared, and our ordinance speaks of that, that's, that's something, I mean, traditionally, obviously, we could handle, I think we need to do a better job in the future, imagine that, make sure of us, do it.
So the next subject is an initial discussion on smoking on municipal properties, which would include things like the Torrey Smith Park, Rodden Grove, Beeches, Elling Park, and Straus as well. And this is not trying to, not trying to outlaw anything, what we're trying to do is, I was hoping the council would agree with that, we could just, um, as far as smoking goes, maybe put some signage up at some point in time that says, please don't smoke, because by law, we're not, we're not able to tell people can't smoke on the beach. Virginia, in fact, the state doesn't allow us to do that, other states do. So same thing with Torrey Smith Park, believe it or not, but we don't want everybody to know that, we do have no smoking signs on property, again, it's not a failure on the beach, it's a failure at the state level to recognize it, not everybody smokes, not everybody likes cigarette smoke, or, yeah, cigarette butts left over the beach. And along those lines, you've noticed, if you haven't noticed, there's a couple restaurants in town, one in particular, that has gotten away from plastic scrolls completely, and I couldn't agree with that more. Living on the water, I can go out there right now, and I can promise you I can pick up five to ten plastic scrolls in my little footpath while I live, that's a fact, and I don't know where they could come from, if they were fish, you could load it with it. So, um, if we could convince more, just maybe a public push, from one of the restaurants to switch over to, I like the pasta noodle thing that they're doing, kind of, to one of those restaurants, seems to work, it's quite available, you're done with it, you're hungry, you can eat it. And, you know, cope with it, whatever, get enough, I mean, have a whole place to get it. But I think, I really think that we could, uh...
Yeah, we could hook meal day or something.
Yeah, yeah. But I really think that, you know, if you start pushing that agenda a little bit, you can't force it, you can't make them do it, but we could maybe just put the good horse sense, we do have some...
Would you be willing to have a conversation with me after the meeting about this?
Sure.
Drop weekends are an issue for the disabled community, and I'd really like to get that out there before we push this.
Okay, sure. Good. Any questions left?
No, not at the time.
Who else? No. Okay. Um, this, next is a big deal, the initial buildout of the number streets. And, do you wanna talk about that real quick?
The council, Mr. Mayor, I know that I've had for probably the last twelve months informal conversations regarding the possibility and potential buildout of the number streets between the Meadows and the Number Streets. I think the economy, at the national level, is gonna provide us the opportunity to really get into that action, how much energy you wanna put behind it, so I'm certainly just have a brief conversation about that tomorrow, as well as maybe a formal passing towards me, to within formally look at some plans and some forces of action. If I can remind you of the aerial footage that we flew last year, now that we have it in place, now that we have the budget to take that aerial footage, and to take that data and put it on the map, is gonna provide our mindset elevations, it's gonna allow us to do some analysis, and to take more of a, a larger scale, what do we pay to develop something like that? It's always been on my mind, as are probably the majority of citizens who connect, the Meadows to the Number Streets, so that'll help the neighborhood. So I just really wanted to open a discussion in town as well.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and mention that we had a meeting with the other things as well. So, uh, there's, there's potential that we could see some significant change in town, albeit it'll happen slow, and that's the right way for it to happen, it won't happen overnight. So we've, we've been approached by Villanor Builder Group again, we had a meeting with them last week, another meeting coming up in two weeks, about two weeks, with them. They want to potentially get started on nine hundred thirteen lots that they are on across from Locusts. And, uh, they've come to us, which is a great sign, um, they have some great ideas, since there's not gonna be a golf course, replacement for the golf course, could potentially be a YMCA, things of that nature, which they're, they're the one that did diligence in that. So it's, that's a big community, nine hundred thirteen houses, some condos, I think some townhouses, and single families. We have talked to them at length prior to this meeting, in the last one, that we come back, we wanted to talk about a technology center up there as well, and they're aware of that, we also think that's a great idea. And we also talked about some, even though we have a sewer plant right there, doing some different type of sewage management, that maybe would, would give us some federal funding, and things of that nature as well. So, um, I don't wanna cause too much fanfare, because obviously nothing's happened, and like I told the guy at the last meeting, you're coming to us, it could potentially be the tail end of a wonderful cycle that we've been through, and almost happened last time. And, uh, so if things don't go in reverse, there's potential that we could have, you know, groundbreakage up there, and have some condominiums get started, which would be a start. We also asked them, we told them we have a lot of hammers in town, and a lot of saws in town, we would like to rent employees, as much labor as we possibly could from the surrounding areas here, and they said that they would obviously do that, so that would probably help a lot of people tremendously, so they wouldn't have to commute all the way to the northern journey DC area to work, they could stay in town and work here, and that building would probably be, I would imagine, seven, seven years or so, I would think, something that big. And then, that's not including the four hundred and some lots we have in town, in the Number Streets, and those, of course, we want to park that area as well. The flyover we did was to look at how the stormwater potentially would be managed, and, like we, like we thought, it would require retention pods, and that's a great spot for parks, those kind of things, so we would facilitate all that once, but we didn't want to, I didn't feel like we wanted to keep this a secret, because this will be our second meeting with these folks, in a fairly short period of time, so they obviously have some intent, and we're hoping that we're gonna get some kind of commitment from them really soon, that they wanna get started, it's their property, they have the right to do it, they purchased it, actually, Rob and I attended the meeting, because I pointed, was hoping Rob would come, with her background, what she does, background on the planning commission, and it has turned out as a really good meeting. And Quinn was there, and Rob was there, and Richard was there, and Barry Jamani Farm was there. So it's a starting point, that's all it is, but it is exciting, no matter how you cut it, and if you can imagine, it could potentially reduce our cost of water and sewer to each individual home, of course, there's, there's burns that come with it, and more resources, but, uh, restaurants could thrive, the town could thrive, so seeing where it goes. And then, this relationship that we have with Dowright now has been getting better and better by the deck, and, uh, as Susan pointed out a while back, they've reached out, they need places for their students to stay, and, uh, this could be a potential to help that as well, and, uh, so hopefully some might not, we'll see what, I wouldn't, I don't want to be too excited to receive the first show of their, the school, whether they're working, and, uh, and, uh, something like that.
I'd like for the initial discussion of the buildout of the Number Streets for, um, for a subcommittee to get to me, that so that this can, um, maybe, I don't know, spread legs a little bit, uh, in a task with, you know, developing the concept growing and this kind of action. Um, I know that Rob's team is a major part of that, it's already pretty lotted in the Number Streets, so that's not something that we can change, but we do need to understand with stormwater effects, where, um, potential water and sewer connections and pump stations need to go. So, so, um, but the planning process needs to be thorough, and need to document, so the town manager, Rob, is really with his team, I'd like to do it on the task force, if that's possible, but I'm, you know, I know I raise my hand a lot, so somebody else could do it too. Um, I don't know who else would wanna do it, but if you can create a subcommittee for developing a, a concept growing and this kind of action, I think that's an exit for the Number Streets.
So, um, real quick, just additional news to this, if you don't know, we've hired another person in the planning zoning office. We've been extremely fortunate, we, we hired a person from Saint Mary's County, Maryland, who's working with us now, she's working with Richard, and she also has a master's in cleaning from the RBA. So, um, she came to us, she's very excited about being in town, I think she wants to move here very soon, um, so we have a really robust office, and so these are kind of things that now's a great time for us to, to do as much as we can, while this town, we have an ounce. But as far as, you want to, I'll let you now set up, build a committee, put ideas together, pass it to the council, and get a group together, if I, if not like that, I can maybe, I guess, take a finger.
Yeah, this is an establishment of a committee, or are we, uh, in, in the rankings, we would have the chair established, a committee, and then assigned members to committee, but I'm not sure at capital level, meaning I wish to put out, you could just say there was a committee, there will be five members.
Are you one representative from the planning commission?
They'd be very awful.
Attention to be one or two? I think you'd want a planning commission member, or a member of council, obviously, the planning zoning office, your office, and, um, is there any, like, homeowners groups or anything in the Number Streets at all, where there's, no, there's not?
But, yeah, I told them from the planning commission lives on the Number Streets, is there, and are there maybe other commissioners that live in the Number Streets? It would be good to have somebody who would, I would imagine, or both points, to have it presented.
Maybe somebody from the chamber, yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's good, so we'll start that, let's take that one up immediately. Questions, oh, next is gonna be, I don't know, sign, signs.
Mr. Mayor, I was just approached about the, uh, the new radio station, station manager on Sunday, that's why I didn't make the agenda, why the vice mayor graciously, uh, changed the agenda for us, but I just wanted to, to get this out in front of the members of council, they have, um, they have approached a couple of community members, and one, one sign, and I was even thinking of two signs, as you come into town from both approaches, but, um, they want a sign that says, welcome to, you know, basically, welcome to Clonan Beach, that I'm, that I'm there, and we are, eighty-one. Um, they have talked to some of the community members and some of the businesses here, to where the sign would be paid for, there wouldn't be any money from the town. But I'm, I mean, I've, I've, for God's sake, I've seen that, that sign ordinance since I've been here, and I don't even want to pick it up again. So I, I kinda wanted to, you know, one of, one of the spots we were thinking about, and Ted and I talked, were, um, there on the public works property, is when you come into town on the right, there's a, there's a sign that basically, I think it, maybe the Rattens or, or several of our, not, our, our private clubs, and maybe the Boy Scouts, whatever, maybe there, but, uh, there's a section of fence there, and Rob and I were talking this prior to the meeting, but there's a, there's a section of chain link there, Rob, you know what I'm talking about? That somebody had like a final sign made many years back, in appreciation of the police department, our department, and it hasn't been kept up, although I appreciate that the lady put the sign up, because she put two up in town, and I think it was a great gesture during a, during a difficult time for the police department, as well as our other emergency services. But, you know, I'm, I'm not in a position to tell them what, what size sign we need, we're not looking for a future billboard sign, we're looking for something maybe the size of the current signs that are there. Um, and I just kinda wanted to, to let everybody know that, that I was asked about that, and maybe ask Richard to look into, you know, what was put there, the sign, we obviously want it, it's not lotted on the road, um, but maybe put one there, and I know there's one also, um, in the area, I don't know, it's a B dot right away, or it's town property, if you come in from the other end of town, um, in appreciation of the state champion baseball, basketball teams, basketball team. Um, so I didn't know if we could maybe put one there, but again, the, the materials are gonna be paid for, it's gonna be a, uh, the same material that Rankin sells, as far as we get point hole board, so it's waterproof material, they would wrap it, if their, if their station would go, and welcome to come into town. Um, it's not something I want to, you know, it has to be done... It's not something I want to, you know, it has to be done right away. But I wanted to kind of find out what we could and couldn't do so I could report back to, to the station manager as well as the person that's going to buy the project to make the signs. And just wanted to kind of get everybody's feeling on what followed us. I think I said the last meeting that we had, I think the radio station is awesome. They put out a lot of good information for the foundation, for the chamber, for other community events. And I think it's great to have our own station where we can cut it off and hear what's going on in town and not in Frederick's Park where you see Richard. That's all I had in mind.
Rob, remember I asked you about finding out what we call it, the raft water tower versus painting? We talked about that. Wonder if we could do a joint after, rafting water tower.
It's a lot of wrapping. I, I, like I said, I, what we're talking about is something minimal. We have, we have people in the community that are willing to pay for it. I don't know if I can get, I don't know if I can.
If it's in the mind, I'll go. Because we're ready to do some of the towers down in town.
Yeah, I agree with that too. Yeah, that would certainly be.
Yeah, we could share the thoughts about it. Just leave the thought, that's all.
I don't want to speak to the foundation because I'm not a member, but that may be something that they will have a stack of, I don't mind.
Rather than painting, do a raft. Wrap supposedly once town come along, these are the come along less maintenance, and the last one is supposedly. Were they using, they wrapped the boats now, they wrapped the cars, trucks, yeah.
That didn't pan out, Ted, pan for any reason. You want something custom painted on Android, at least some folks did.
Okay, we work the status items now. All right, Mr. Mayor, come with you and Rob to discuss the plaza update. I'm hoping for some extremely exciting news today.
Robert, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to actually turn the first status update over to Mr. Murphy because he is very diligently bringing this particular effort back. We're very excited and I don't want to take away the thunder, so please come in.
Thanks. We had a development today where we actually had a reconstruction meeting for the selected contractor. Huge participation by BDOT and all the representatives of different areas that are specifically environmental and civil rights and all the associated entities related to the federal project. So, with that said, we, we have the signed agreement that we received today, pending on Queen's signature tomorrow, I hope. We're waiting for the insurance documents finalized. And at which point, we will issue notice to proceed immediately thereafter if everything is as per all the requirements. Which technically have to wait fifteen days, but it does not look like that's going to happen. See, if we got the location, the documents, we could have notice to proceed early as well.
So, so after seven years roughly, we're going to get the plaza, the under-
And the boardwalk.
The underfunded.
Absolutely.
And then, whole section of boardwalk, now my baby goes, ah, ah, ah.
Fixed up.
Yep.
Okay.
It's awesome news. Thank you very much.
Awesome news. I'm glad we didn't let that fall through practically. That was, would have been the quickest loss of Pam and the dollars that we had. Very good. Thank you, Rob, for standing with that and pointing some.
Well, I will.
Okay, next is real estate broker.
Yes, sir. I sent an email out earlier this week. I'm also sending, I think approximately a month ago, looking for approval of the RFP that I have cracked. I think it's ready for publication. What I'd like to do is circle around and just get the approval, also then I'll go ahead and digitally publish it to EVOP, which is the LED powered electric proposal website. And also maybe get some names of local retailers so I can reach out and just let them know that they need to act it. So, pending any questions you want to have, I'm ready to start that this week. Typically, within three or four weeks, just to be able to respond to RFP and future questions. We could feasibly have a representation by what, early November, in the republic. Take some time to come to look at all our properties and really understand exactly what we have to offer. So, the upcoming season, we would be part of the show for the properties that we're talking about. Any other questions?
You could read the email already, but is it based on both? Okay, so I'm sure, I just want to read it.
Yep, in perfect sense. It's based off of the information that we discussed. The properties between the two resolutions that we've passed are both on the, so the vision of the properties are within.
And this real estate agent is really a, in a position to be a consultant to us, to give us their advice. And it's not just a marketing agent. It's for a little bit different aspect than that.
Yes, and this is true representation of all those, since they would put marketing costs. They would not only look to the local possibility of buyers, but they also have a need to look regional, maybe international. To, to look at the top level of representation to really provide, go after, go after.
I would recommend that if you want to hear other council members asking not to do it, I suppose, it does this more. It gives everybody a chance to answer better every once in a while again. There is no sense in writing it down. Next is memorials commission.
Me, yeah. So, when we first, me and Mr. Servie were tasked with this, we developed four names. One of the big things we were trying to do is we were trying to find people that we didn't want to, like, interfere with them. I still need one. We came up with four names. I know we spoke with two of them. Both, which were, one very interested, another one semi-interested. And then, honestly, that was a couple of months ago, last time we discussed it. So, we're kind of there. We need to find a third member that's a three-member board that we have to develop. There was also a list sent out from Mr. Farney. I don't, he was going to reach out, or I think it was sent to you, and board to be incorrect, means Mr. Servie. On the foundation, the people that wanted to be on it.
I know I reached out to Mr. Farney, I think, and I don't remember if it was listed by him or not.
I thought, I thought you returned a name. I had a couple of names returned that, that were interested in being on.
I think what I did was provide Mr. Farney with y'all's address as well as email address to communicate.
Was that, was that the email I received from you or am I mistaken?
It's been so long ago now, I've kind of forgotten.
I know a couple of those names.
The foundation is interested in providing the work design to be on that commission.
Okay. Duly noted, and this will definitely come back up in the meeting.
So, you have two that are not, not members of the council.
We have one, yeah, we have one that has said that they would do it. And we have another that has considered it. And we have a couple of people that have reached out to us, that said they would.
Take that one as well. Thank you for that. Town council priority list and grant opportunities.
I'd like to, one thing on there. One of the things on the priority list was discussion of some sort of Parks and Rec Foundation. I had a short five-hour meeting Friday with the director of Parks and Rec for Caroline County. I've worked a lot with them with the Cloney Beach Youth Athletic Association. So, kind of went in for guidance. He's been the director up there for twenty-five years. Worked for Parks and Rec for thirty years there, so he does know his stuff a little bit. Gave me a lot of information. He knows a lot about the town because he's been through the area for a while. I do know there's other people in town that I've spoke with about wanting to assist with this. And he sent me in a direction because he doesn't think the town, and what he said, he told me some ways to go before the town completely establishes their own Parks and Rec, get outside help first. There were organizations, I don't want to say outside organizations come in, but people that know what they're doing to come in, that offer those types of assistance to help us start it up. I'm actually trying to meet with one of whom we just heard before, is the Y, the Y and Montross. They often, that's the first Y I'm going to get in touch with, with the director down there. And hopefully from there, making offers some assistance. One thing would be to try to get with the other facilities in town. We have a new tourist, Matt Rec Park, which would be great. They could, we could use to have activities that they would come in and help us plan. They like to use people from town. They said it's also often a, they'll hire you to help organize the activity or they'll hire the coaches from the school that's for that particular sport. So, it's also semi-employment opportunity for some people, which is all kind of, I got a wall on it, just still a lot of planning.
Anything else in that regard? Citizen input.
Mr. Mayor, I got something a little bit about.
Sure.
I have called, I'd like to call about, I don't know, I've talked to Taylor and Mr. I. Yeah, I, I think this, this council started off with a bang as far as having decided to need establishment of priorities. I think the town manager, his staff, and the officer have done a great job of, you know, with the radar and grant opportunities. I know I was there, but I paid for a sticker for another car I bought. So, I think we're doing good. But, you know, I've sat on this council for almost three years. And things like this memorials commission, and this is no disrespect to Pat or Mr. Servie or anybody else, but this has been so long that we've forgotten about it. And I know our previous council, we, we went away from having a barrage of stuff on, on, you know, on our work sessions and on our meetings. But, you know, there's, and same way with the school stuff. You know, I, I've got a lot going on right now personally. And I don't remember where I stood when I talked to Robert, when I talked to Vicky, when I talked to other people about this three hundred fifty thousand dollars. I don't, I don't remember. I mean, she and I actually hadn't met yet. I think you actually hadn't met yet. And, you know, I think you and I had a conversation about it. But this just, this came up out of nowhere again. And, and, you know, for priorities, especially when we're talking about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, we need to keep that underway. And memorials commission, I think that's important. That's important to a lot of our community members. So, we had the plaques in the back of the wall that, that, and I went there and I realized that we have to have this whole building redone. And I'm sure that will reappear. But little stuff that just kind of falls off to the wayside and then months later, it appears again. And I, I, you guys' memory may be better than mine, but I don't, I don't remember a lot of the stuff because it dies for months and then it just pops back up. So, you know, and, and this is no disrespect to Kathy or anybody, or the town manager or anybody else. But, you know, if it's something we need to talk about, then let's talk about it. Let's vote on it and get it the heck out of our way and keep moving forward. I mean, I, I, I found a new energy to be at this new council. And, and I thought it was great that we sit down and have an eight-hour meeting, we establish priorities. And, you know, we also have our list, but it's, it's kind of like, it's little stuff that just falls to the side and then it pops up four months later when somebody asks about it. And, and I mean, if it's our, if it's, if it's on our agenda, let's talk about it, let's vote on it, let's get it out of the way and move on to the next, to the next thing. That's, that's just my thoughts.
And I'd just like to say a couple of things real quick. So, I appreciate that. And also, I know we've had a very difficult schedule recently as well. And the memorials have come up several times in meetings recently. And finally, not a few people answered, but I think that's one of the hardest parts, finding people who are willing to get involved in that. And I understand as well, because people are tapped out. Everybody has words in their head that hats in this town, probably doing things. So, you know, when I walk up to people, they go, I carry them, you know. I run from them. So, and, and I agree with you on the thing with the school, but I will tell you, I think that that waiting was probably the best thing we ever did because it gave us a chance to build a better, much better relationship with them. We're still at the same dollar amount. And I believe, I'll have to find out, but I believe consensus, I know what consensus was at the time this resonated. I don't think it's changed any, but the way it's sitting. I know, I know what you're talking about. I know what I told you. I know, you and I talked, I know we talked, I know you and I talked. I don't remember who talked at times. But I do remember, I know it's Stephen I talked to. So, you know, from there, I think that's going to, that moved fairly swiftly. And I think there's a better understanding of how that money is to be dispersed and why it's to be dispersed. So, there won't be as much contention over that. There shouldn't be anyway. It should remain a very depressing battle for that. But I do appreciate what you're saying. You're, you're absolutely right. And I will tell you this, you work a little, you know, we'll spend a little bit slower than we do. A lot of times, it's monetary reasons that we're doing. A lot of times, it's because we only meet twice a month. And everybody has to visualize as well. And so, we could probably do a little better, but I like the fact that we're not being hasty and just pulling trigger on things so that, you know, have it completely bowled through. But yeah, we definitely, I think we're stabilized now. I feel like we're moving a little better. I know that it's definitely, it seems a little more professional most of the time. I'm assuming we're all there. Anyway, okay, that it from the council.
Kathy, will you put the actual copy of the priority list and grant opportunity in our binders for the next meeting? I thought it used to be in there and then I, I had mine, but in the new binder, I find that. Just for the next meeting, put it in there just to remind people. It would be great to see what we've accomplished off that list. Because I do think that even though we're a little bit tired, I'm tired. But that we have accomplished quite a many times off the list and are continuing to tackle them. And part of the reason why these things are coming back up out of the blue is because we have that list where there is town manager to go back to and say, oh, yeah, let's not forget about these things and let's bring them back up, you know.
Yeah, and things aren't static either. Things are fluid. New things coming about on a regular basis as well. So, things follow this type of. Mr. Kearns? Mr. Kearns advised me that he may need four minutes. So.
I'll try to keep it on four minutes. First of all, I'm going to give a brief history lesson. This is concerning the yacht club money. The town on, under previous council members, they went on, when the yacht club was sold, they put it into a fund. And the money was there and the town decided to go on a real estate binge. And what they bought was all the property on the boardwalk. That's including the town hill in the lower part, but not including where the property, where High Tides is. That was owned by A.B. Walker Properties. And the- And the money that was taken from the fund probably totaled just over a million dollars. And the town was hoping to repay that money by selling that land. It never materialized, and so, they never paid it back. Now, uh, the real estate boom failed. Now, the other thing that I'm gonna talk about is concerning the signs, I, I travel around this town, and the sign says, "Conscious builds community." And that's what makes Colonial Beach so unique. And the other thing is nothing better than saying thank you for giving me the time to say thank you for what you do. Thank you again, thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle, um, I've been here maybe since March of two thousand and eighteen. Gabrielle? Three, I'm waiting for her, I'll see you right. Three, three, two, Fourth Street. You're welcome. Uh, my last name starts with a C, I'm not gonna bother, so... Um, as far as building out the number streets, what Robin said, uh, I live on the number streets, as you've heard. I like the idea of incorporating the community, so, while you have someone that's on a, I believe you said a, some kind of commerce or community is really difficult when you're back there, but, um, I would like to see a member of the number streets represented. With that being said, um, I feel like we have more intel of what actually goes on in that's our neighborhood, and where things should be. Not to say that, you know, we would take precedence over what you guys say or anything, but I would prefer that. Um, as far as the sport going, money goes, um, and about agreeing on streamlining things, I thank you for that. Um, I've been to, I think, three or four meetings, it's very hard, I work in Arlington one day a week, and I commute, so sometimes it's hard to come to these meetings when it's six o'clock. Um, another thing I'm gonna bring up, I'm not upset about this, but I've seen, I guess, an outpour, especially on the neighborhood app and on Facebook, about how things were done concerning the water bill. And I'm only bringing that up because I understood, 'cause I went to the meeting, so I knew that that was gonna happen, but my neighbors didn't know what was gonna happen, and my neighbor behind me didn't know what was gonna happen, because she can't leave the house. So, I propose the next time that we have something like this, like the water bill issue, a couple lines, just like someone else said here, a couple lines on the last bill that says, hey, your water bill's gonna go up, just so their comments and what's going on. Um, I understand, like, when I moved into town, I didn't know what my garbage day was, I didn't know where to obtain that information. I knew that I got a city tax bill in the mail, and that was it. The way that we do things and how things are distributed here is very poor, and it's poor because if I'm coming into this town, and we wanna bring people into this town, they have to know what's going on. I shouldn't, I should not have to guess to go onto this billboard of just drive around town looking for things. I should not have to go, I didn't even know where the building was to pay the water bill. You know, those are little things that you guys can send out, in a peck, on a form, or whomever can send out, say, hey, your garbage day is this day, if you need to reach this person, it's this day, or whatever the case is. I just think that that's, is very poorly handled. Um, I'm younger than most people in this town, and I have a lot of ideas, and I wanna volunteer for stuff, but I don't know. I don't know, and I don't have time to come to these meetings, I work in Arlington. I'm off on the weekend, and I would love to help out, but I don't know. Uh, my neighbors are younger too, there's a whole bunch of us that are on my street that are young, and we're energized and we wanna help out, but we don't know. And to come to these meetings, I'm not gonna say that they're not, some of them are very long, it's, and I've been in traffic the whole day, that's not what I wanna do, um, we need to figure out some kind of way to fix that. I think that's pretty much all that I have to say, you have a question, please connect it.
Yeah, I just was, gonna say that, um, so, as a start for, for you and anyone else, and you, you need to get this word out, you can go to the town's website as well, not everybody has computers, and not everybody's computer savvy. Um, I actually thought that wanting to build state bills would increase, it did not, I thought that was supposed to happen. That was supposed to happen, I'm sorry until we failed, but that didn't happen, that was supposed to happen. That was the whole, it, up until a year or so ago, we didn't have the capacity to send any messaging out in our bills, okay? We since bought a new system, actually saved money by any system going ourselves rather than hiring a vendor to do it, and it allows us to put messages in it along with it, so everybody can have, whether your computer's savvy or not, you can read what happened at your hands. Um, and I, I apologize on behalf of town and the administration that that did occur. I thought that was gonna occur, and I thought it had occurred, um, so, for that, I apologize. We did have public hearings this year where, and that went on for actually a lot longer than it was supposed to, 'cause we kept the lane, and, um, but, but we felt short with, with getting it to everybody, for that, we apologize. I apologize on behalf of town, and, um, but we'd love to have you volunteer. I, I'm retired from Arlington County, thirty-one years there, Dallas works in Arlington as well, so, um, I'm familiar with Arlington, and I'm familiar with, partially, I can, I can retire, but I did do some consulting up there after retirement. Uh, anyway, um, so, again, that perhaps not, not a good rule, um, but, uh, we, we love volunteerism. Behind you is Susan Mack, who's in charge of the, the, um, chamber conference. We have, you can get to this through our website or the chambers, there's a volunteer signup sheet, and they will send you, uh, each event is looking for volunteers, and they send it out, it's a blast, am I right, Susan? And then you just fill in there, and you want to participate in it, you meet with them, they'll show you what they want you to do, and away you go, that's how it works. And, uh, then you'll meet the other, I think we have four thousand residents, and we can tell the two thousand nine hundred ninety volunteers. So, and, uh, you know, yeah, get involved, that's, that's how it works. And, uh, we, we did say tonight, we want somebody from the number streets, and probably preferable, because it's a larger portion of people, they were two as well, you gotta be careful when communities get too big, obviously, it loses some of its luster. Um, but that said, yeah, we, we definitely need people from that community up there. I live in Metta, it's something distant, a little north of it, but, um, fully expect...
I have no idea what that is.
Well, there you go, so, um, if you, yeah, it's science, though, true. If you come by the town offices, which are on Douglas Avenue up there, where you pay your water bills and stuff, or your taxes, there's maps in there that show the different neighborhoods, if you stop in Richard's office, he can show you what, what considered Love Point, the Meadows, the number streets, uh, that whole thing, the point, and different parts of Tennessee, yes, ma'am? Classic shores.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Classic shores, you're right, you're right, yeah.
Is that what we're, is that what we're called?
Classic shores.
We're called classic shores, okay, see, didn't even know.
Yeah, yeah, classic shores, very, very, anyway, but, but thank you.
I have one other thing that I had broke down that I didn't recognize in my handwriting. Um, as far as school goes, um, not to put my business out there, but since I'm here, I have an autistic child. I came over, I'm originally from Miami, from Miami, uh, I'm an immigration officer, by the way, so, from Miami, I got pulled, I can't even know what's going on, I got pulled to be up here. From up here, I stayed in Fredericksburg, some stuff happened, I had to come here, so I came here. And the programs in which we have, and I'm speaking about this because we were talking about what to do with the money, with the school board's money. The programs in which we had in Stafford County for children with disabilities was very large. There was different things, there was intervention, early intervention that we had with her, um, some classes that moms took or parents took, just so they could understand stuff for the community, so the community can understand how to deal with these, uh, children with disabilities, and we don't have anything like that here.
You do.
Oh, if we do?
Again?
The information, it's not out there.
You do, um, as long as your child's over the age of two and a half, under the federal guidelines, and she's been identified as, the school system, um, does have programs, that they will, um, get your child into, now, are they local? Not necessarily, um, because you are in an extremely rural area where, um, a lot of the children go to Fredericksburg for, um, their permanent, and contact the school board.
I have, not to cut you off, I have, um, I'm very aggressive when it comes to things like that, so, I've done that, I've even spoken to the superintendent, I'm very, um, in your face when it comes to that. Um, I'm aware of certain programs, as you say, but that's not what I'm speaking of. Um, she goes to school here, she goes to Colonial Beach School, and she goes for three to four hours a day, she's four. That means when she turns five, she'll be there full-time.
Right.
And they, they have her three hours a day because they claim they can't support that, they can't support a full day. So, we need to revisit that, because...
That's a preschool program, right?
She has IEP.
Right.
She came over from that, from Stafford, so she's there for her IEP, because I wouldn't even qualify for the preschool program, it, it's a long story, but anyhow, what I'm trying to say is, they limit her time, because they said that they don't have the resources. So, maybe there needs to be a check and balance, I don't know, but they're saying that there's not resources. There's other kids within our autism community, which are friends with their moms, uh, they're going to Washington. Wash, Washington Heights Club, I think that's called, the other school?
Washington.
Washington District, they're going to Washington District, because they can't get the support that they need from our local schools. So, if they have the money, if we have the, the, the budget for it, then we need to go back and revisit that. I'm just throwing ideas out, I'm not sitting here saying, this is wrong, this is wrong. What I'm saying is, this is a problem that I realized, let's talk about it, let's throw it out in the air, because maybe if we wanna be transparent, this is what's going on.
And we had met with Mrs. Turner.
That is correct, mhm, uh, 'cause she came over with a full, from Stafford County, 'cause it's kinda funny in Fredericksburg, the way they zone stuff. She came over with a full program, they told me that they were not able to support her having a full day. She had an aide and everything that would go around and do stuff with her, and the ratio of children was three to two teachers. Now, I understand we can't support that, that's, that's a big number, but to, but she shouldn't be thrown into a classroom with kindergartners either, because that's twenty-three to twenty-five students, for a person that's autistic, that's way too much. So, we need to revisit some things, I don't know if you guys have the leverage to put pressure, or, I don't know how that really works, but I'm throwing that out there.
Yeah, town council does not have, um, where for all to, um, it takes the school act to do what comes to the education process, um, they simply don't have...
But can you ask them how, basically how they allocate money? Can you basically ask them, like, what are you doing with this money, what programs is it going into?
They have a budget that they have to put together that's presented to us. Um, and then the money is allocated, mostly that kind of money, that's not from our own money.
Sam?
As you well know, their own state money, um, so I would really do that, I'll tell you what, I'll talk to you in Washington.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and close some meetings.
Thank you.
And then you guys can talk off on us, well, and, we haven't been to a, so we wouldn't be in a conversation.
They're next one, sir. They're next one.
Next one, sir?
Yeah, we have our world session now, they have their meeting next week, and we need our party to be in the meeting after one, all the...
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.